Oh, here it is. I got it. Okay. So we're going to call this meeting to order at 6:10. For the public watching, we had our meeting confer with EMDGF a little long, so we apologize for being late. So we're going to call this meeting to order at 6:10. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have a sign in sheet? Anybody want to?
It's overrun. Sign in sheet was up.
You guys, anybody?
The media desk.
All right. Okay. We have all board members present. I'm going to pull up and read our mission statement. In partnership with communities, the mission of the Delaware Clinton and Allen School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, like law enforcement. So welcome, everybody. We don't have any public comments tonight. And rebel recognition. I just want to see.
Do you need to adopt the agenda first?
Oh, thank you, Ronnie.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion by Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ronnie. Oh, just didn't have time to stop on here. So I appreciate that. I just want to give a shout out. I have been able to watch our kids in action as far as sports and activities online, and I know they've got speech going. And I just want to thank everybody that's giving these kids some morality, because if they're, you can just see them when they are participating, they just feel so much better. So I am grateful for everybody running clocks and repping and coaching. And Tracy, just so you know, we're the only school district that does confession, so thank you. It's a normal basketball game. We can have a puff and have a sucker, so I appreciate that. And again, all our staff, all they're doing for our kids. Because without our staff and our teachers and everybody, we would not be doing what we do. So thank you to everybody. Anybody have any shout outs? Go ahead, Ronnie.
Yeah. After the last meeting, one of my, one of my many weaknesses is I don't do real well with giving compliments to people. Just one of my weakness things. But I went home after the last meeting, because you guys had thanked us board and different things. And I said, well, it was tiring, you know, doing a surgeon. I went home and I said, Ronnie, you blew it again, what you should have said back then. So I'll say it tonight instead, that yeah, that thing was maybe a little tiring, a little exhausting, but it's miniscule compared to what all of our administration and all of the staff have done over this past year. You know, that's much more tiring than what we've had to do. And this whole last year, I haven't, I haven't really been that worried or thing about everything that's been going on, because I know the administration and all the staff are going to handle it. They're just going to get done. So I've always been at ease. So I guess at this point, you know, to all of you administrators, all of the staff that are watching, from the bottom of my heart, a great big thank you for everything that you've done for our kids in this school, because I know you're going to continue to work the problem, as you say, and do whatever it needs, and it's going to get done. So sorry I didn't say that last two weeks ago, but thank you again.
Well said, Ronnie. Totally agree. I'm just going to feel that sentiment just real quick. Guys came in on a Wednesday unannounced and stopped in. And the teachers and everybody, staff from every level, stopped what they were doing to say hi and greet me and sing praises to their coworkers and all the stuff that was getting done around the school. And it was great to see all the joy and excitement amongst all the work that was also being done on those Wednesday days. So I appreciate everything from a parent perspective as well as a school perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. I did show up.
Say thank you to all the staff members, whether it's career professionals, teachers, the students, whoever. With the vaccines that have been going on, people can't even be able to get their first dose and now they're starting. People have been helping out on those days. When staff possibly could help each other out, to double interview each other, to step in on that. I don't think we would have been able to have as many people get their vaccines as we did, if we could get that flexibility. I think I'm kind of going to see that this whole pandemic started, and it's just that flexibility with everyone and helping each other out.
That's wonderful to hear. That's awesome. Okay. So we are moving on to 6.1 Board Committee Reports. Anybody have any committees you want to report on?
I am. I wasn't able to attend the wellness committee, but I got the notes. So I'm just going to mention a couple of things.
Good.
A grant was awarded for a new oven, which is like $20,000. I thought that was pretty amazing, deserves some shout out, I guess. And then they kind of did an update about what we talked about last week with Jason McCoy and Flavored Tobacco. So it sounds like they have several different people, committees, students, willing to write a letter of support. That's all I got.
Okay. I got with the 45 senior leadership team this afternoon. And I think, I guess I don't know, Margot and Joe are... Are you presenting tonight? No, no, you're not. Okay. So I guess a bulk of the meeting, I guess it started out there talking about, you know, when to have the two integrationists come, if they're going to have it. It's necessary to have two right away, if they were going to stagger and have one start it next year, and then have two by 2022. And just getting their feedback on those positions. Another part of it was talking about what it would look like if we went and took it back to five days a week. And, you know, there was a lot of comments about that, a lot of concerns and questions. And Margot and Joe were wanting to get a feel for what would need to happen in order for that, for five days to be feasible. And teachers were concerned about the 30 minutes of prep. And they're concerned about, you know, everything from busing to the cafeteria staff, to custodial staff. And talking about the specific date, the 8th, because you have the conferences coming up, as well as the fourth parties that are due, and then it's just a real big time crunch for them. But it's, it's an unfortunate time of year to, to get all of that going. And so there was just a lot of, it was, it was a good conversation. And, you know, I guess, I don't know if that's something, when we would be voting on that. I know the teachers were wondering about that. And I said, I don't know, that was something that we were doing tonight? How that worked? But I know they had a lot of reservations about it. And so I don't know if that's something that, Brian, you're going to be talking about in your report. So.
All of us.
Yep, okay. So anyways, I thought that was, I, I, I was really happy that I made that meeting. So I guess that aside, the only thing was, the other thing was that there are still no spring field trips so far. No field trips.
Spring field trips.
Spring field trips. So, and then there was one concern about, you know, with Glendon not having a playground. You know, there was a suggestion of possibly having the kids go to the community department, whether it was one day or having a kind of rotation to do something like that. I thought that was a good idea, because I have three kids here, and there's nothing, it's all slop and gross. So I thought that was a good suggestion. Thank you, Laura. We just had meeting confer with EMDGF. So definitely, we had the conversation about, about the, getting back to all in person. They're very happy with their new computers. That's going well, they're having a lot of vaccinations. Just some communication topics, just talking about follow through and stuff. So we think we came up with a good suggestion between both groups talking, and so hopefully we're going to follow through with that when we have our next meeting confer to see if that's working. And then just cleaning issues, and we've talked about this before. You know, we, we're just always short-staffed. We can't fill our positions. And are we going to have to start talking about doing contracted services for our cleaning staff? So might be something we are going to have to look into in the near future here and start getting some calls or discussing it in fiscal personnel, because it is, it is an issue. And we've had issues for you that is trying to, to get staff. So, yeah, did I miss anything? Ronnie or David? So yes, and then we didn't have a fiscal personnel, because the only thing we had is our early retirement people that Brian had sent out. And we didn't, we didn't have to have a meeting about that, because we'd already discussed it prior to that, that we were going to be offering. Can't think of that word. What's the word I'm thinking? Insurance or the money they get for early retirement? What am I thinking?
You're talking about the early retirement and stuff?
Yeah. So we already did that prior to our last one. So we didn't have enough.
And we don't have enough new information yet from the state as far as how they're doing the distribution of the money, the funds. And that's one, but I'll hit some of that in my report.
Okay. Any other committees? Nope. All right. So FY '22 calendar report.
So you notice I added a couple more amendments from what the original one was sent. And part of this stuff, you know, from originally one of the send, we've been definitely scrambling, because again, every time I hear there's going to be an executive order, I just kind of cringe, because we don't know what's up with it. Because we're not in that communication. But so one thing, and again, this is both of the topics on the calendar report. We know we have some of our administrative team that can give a lot more than I can about. Mary Ann, Peggy, you guys are on it. Who else am I missing? Margot. And I know Wayne was also at the last meeting. Because what we're trying to do, what I had asked was, let's make sure that we at least, we got to try to figure out, number one, if we're going to look at a one with Morehead's calendar at all, because of having the opportunity for the kids at DGF to be taking courses, and how do we want to approach that with the Career Academy, which again, we'll come to in my report. Wayne and I'll talk about that a little bit more, the steps that are going on. But one thing we had to find out for sure was from Lee and Matt, whether this was going to create an issue for construction. Once we got to confirm that there's no issues, it's not going to create an issue at all. Then the question just comes down to, if we can do it, because we have a project approved by MDE, we don't have to worry about, we can go before schools, before Labor Day, if we so choose. As a district, automatically, you have the right as a school district, when you have a construction project going on, that's MDE approved. Okay? So that's an opportunity. And so my, the thing I asked the committee members, administrative team wise, was let's look at multiple calendars. Bring it to the committee, and let's just discuss which options might work. Knowing that there's some, Moreheads, you know, basically starting one week before. It's, it's just one week prior. And that way, our kids that would be in those courses would not be missing on the first week meeting of the staff member and all of that. And I'm talking about that. So you guys, you're up.
Well, the first calendar that we talked about was starting the day after Labor Day. What happens with that, with what Brian said, is we're going to be in alignment with when Morehead is starting. And then our students that are going to the Career Academy, they would leave, they wouldn't start until a week later. So that's a little bit harder for them. And then if they, we did say, yes, you have to. But I think you said, Brian, that technically, because our school isn't starting yet, they would be required to go. So then they start a week later than their peers that are at Morehead and attending that. So we were looking at that, but we're going to have another calendar meeting on Wednesday. We did talk about early start, and we're looking at 169 student contact days this year. This year, or next year, I mean, this year, we're at 165? Or 166, right?
It's 166.
Okay, 166. So we have Moreheads next year. But when we go back on Wednesday, if we want to talk about, if we started at the same time as Morehead, then we would look at possibly adding three days or two days on their first spring break with Morehead and have that as the same kind of Morehead. So our schedules as far as dates off would really be very comparable with start date, MDE, Christmas break, Thanksgiving break. Our breaks would be very similar. With that schedule, we would still get out one week before Morehead. But I know Wayne said that he's had some conversations with, you know, people at the Career Academy, and they can make that work. So for one week that we get out earlier, it'd be probably a little bit easier than having kids start a week later and not getting that base information, you know, that groundwork information and during everything that you can talk about that first week of class. So we'll talk about that more on Wednesday when we have another calendar committee. Also, for this, for next year, we've talked about having a late start of Wednesdays a month on, on Wednesday a month. We've heard all the clear that we really have the secrets of preparation and having some extra time to collaborate this year. And we're trying to figure out a way that we could make that work for next year, so if we would do one late start a month. And with the plan that by August, the leadership teams and the principals would come to the board and say, this is our plan this year, and we're going to be very focused, whether middle school is, it's Abbott and with the high schools implementation of the Career Academy or whatever, just going up there, be something decided, like some ideas, but having a very set plan about what can we use some of that time for, and then also some of that collaboration time.
Because they did talk about that collaboration time and being able to do that district wide. So all four grades be able to meet. Those are some of the things that they've been using some of that Wednesday time this year.
Well, when they don't, teachers may be being able to meet and having some of those discussion types. Because right now, it's, it's hard to fit all that in with one. We've gone in for training, you know, those different things. I'm still trying to build some, some structure and so we can accomplish some of the goals. And some people who have been here a long time, many years ago, we did do an early out on Wednesdays. And some of the problems that we ran into with early out is that with coaching, coaches would usually have to end up leaving early to get to their practices. And another thing that kind of ended up happening, I think there was really good planning at the beginning, and then it just kind of, and it wasn't very good use of time, I think people felt. And so again, like Peggy said, we have a plan for every day that we have a late. So what is this going to look like? What are we going to be focusing on? So it's not just, hey, we have this time, but no one's going to... We're all doing it to save no kids, but.
And how long would you say? An hour?
Just to get to work. A floor, like a floor, let's start. And we brought a short schedule that day. We'd want to stay in the same room, I think, just kind of running. Well, hopefully not the same as this year. But, and the other thing is, we went back, we asked, we all talked about this, is the mornings better? Is it after better? And the committee members, and you've got to remember, this is something extra they're taking on. So this is, you know, they, and they, they said that they would prefer the mornings, because they felt people are fresher, and this is a, it's a, it's a good, good time to have.
Because you're not running into a conflict with your coaching.
Yeah. And so at the next school meeting, we'd like to be able to bring two different calendars, or one with the early start and then one with a start after Labor Day, and then bring it to the school board.
Would they?
Yes, the, the... What we would look at, let me see. The 20th, no, the 19th of May would be if we have a early start. And if we started after Labor Day, we would be looking at, we look at graduation on the 15th, but the other students besides seniors would need to come back until the 17th. But if we, if we do the other late start, or excuse me, early, early start, because we're looking, but we'll only bring one to you, because if we add the one with the spring break, that's why we go a little bit later. And then we have graduation on the 22nd.
And last thing, we would look at the 19th. So does the calendar committee, you guys just like, are we building in strong days? Are we going to have e-learning days?
We had talked about the e-learning days. Yeah, we're good at it.
Just curious. How we're proceeding now, but.
Yes, yes. Because this year it's built into the safety plan. So if we don't have a, we don't need to have a safety plan picture. That would be something that we would have to get approved just to have that a year.
And just to re-clarify, Morehead is only starting early because they're under a construction project.
Correct. No, no. Because, because of Minnesota, we can't.
Right. Davey, our staffers are too.
So this isn't something that we have, you know, people wonder, why are we doing well for a while?
Sure.
You know, and the thing is, you know, I, I think if anytime we're doing startups, you know, I've had over the years, whether it be as a principal or superintendent, you know, you bring things forward, maybe you're going to add this department, you're going to, and maybe your numbers. You know your number's going to be low, but it's a startup. So, you know, I don't worry about if only 15 or 20 some kids go to Career Academy next year. We're still in COVID. We're only going to be looking at with the juniors and seniors, it's starting graduate is what we're looking at doing. And then expanding it over time. So that alignment with Morehead is pretty important.
And you said you'll be bringing that next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting will have early start.
So what is, board wise, as far as, do you have any recommendations as far as getting it to the parents, getting it to parents to ask in a circle? Because again, this is one thing we haven't done by a lot of school districts, you know, to get feedback from parents.
But that's, I was going to ask about that, I guess. You know, one of my thoughts with the late start, you know, there's going to be a lot of parents concerned about, hey, I've got to be at work at such and such time to drop the kids off. And it's not a small group, I'm sure there's a large group. So I don't know if that, maybe, I, I don't know, I guess.
I think the same way. I mean, middle school, my kids are self-sufficient. I mean, most are at that age, but to maybe serving all the parents, because, you know, if my kids were in kindergarten, I have to be working here, and I'll be like, what are you going to do for two hours in the morning? I don't have the flexibility.
Yeah. Are you talking about the calendar or the late start?
The late start.
Like, like the two hour or the district calendar?
I think it's both of them. But in particular, the, the late start thing is something that really is going to have to be communicated out.
We have to talk about the late start plan. Margot, what?
Yeah, we have career professionals that need to 35 hours a week. Yeah, 35. That we could set up with a... They can drop them off at, at regular time, make a bad activity and stuff for those kids.
Yeah, breakfast.
For those, for those littles. Yeah. You know, some parents, right, I think this year has taught us that when people, when they say, oh, they can figure a lot of things out, but we, we, we thought that would be a possibility, something that we would offer.
Just one little question. Thank you. I just want to advocate for the late start. I think that the collaboration piece is huge, especially when we're bringing the elementaries together soon. I think, I know that it's great in the middle school and high school as well, but really getting that, that time for the teachers to build that relationship and build that. I think if we give them to, give the district parents enough warning, they can make some sort of plan to. I mean, we've all learned that, hey, we have to be home every Wednesday or whatever it is, and it's, we've made it work because we've had to. And I know it's not ideal, and if we can offer something to those parents, absolutely. Because I know that, I also, my, my flexibility is not, I mean, I'm very structured and usually late, but never, never late. I just get to go in, or go in late. If there is an alternative to somebody watching people in the morning, if they still take the bus with their older siblings and there is an option, then I'd be for it. If there's not, I would be against it.
The, the problem is going to be on the bussing part, because you're not going to just get the elementary kids going on the buses. You're going to either have to get all the kids that want to take the buses, or you're just going to provide that. If you can get the kids here, we will be careful from that point during that two hours. I've been in two different districts and have this. It really comes down to how well it gets organized and what the focus is. I think it's an easy focus, because of the transition and the importance of all of that transition work that's got to take place next year, being able to have the ongoing. So I think that's an easy, and it can even be just a pilot. It just, you know, this may not go permanent, but we see how it goes next year, and if, if we can, you know, if we can get things lined up, which again, with head and the peers, and, I mean, this is kind of, we've been doing this all year as far as like anytime we've had to go on a distance and providing, you know, that childcare availability. So that's already been in place before, and you can have the snacks and all of that.
And I would agree, probably echo Brian, you said about the transportation piece, because a lot of the contractors have, those contractors who drive to them have other full-time jobs. So by going, you know, having late starts, the more we can let them know at any time, the better.
I agree with what Nicole said. I think collaboration is essential. And I don't think any teacher, staff, admin, whatever it is, gets enough time to bed up this, so.
I think next year especially, we have a huge, huge project to bring in, you know, by, by eight, by 12, the two elementary school. There's so, so many things we have to accomplish. And there's just, now that time in the day where they're teaching too, and then when it's not on the distance, you know, we're two different sites. Right now, there's a lot of things that I think we could get done in that time.
All right, thank you, ladies.
Ryan, quick question. What's our status and what's the common ability with the state on those two hours? Do we just give up? Very good. Yes. So yes, that is going to be, one is professional development. So we do not get, that's why it's going to be critical to build in at least 169 days, because even though we were saying we got 169 days, if you take nine of those, if you're going to have it every month, and you lose two hours there, and you've only got six point some that you're counting for the kids, start figuring out how many days you're actually losing. And so it may be one of those things that you actually build. You know what? We may need 170 if we're going to do this. You know, that's why there needs to be multiple discussion. And again, you're going to see the, you're going to see it at the next meeting, there's nothing that, that needs to be voted on. And if it doesn't, if it goes into April, it goes in April. I mean, we got to get this right. And so don't, don't worry about, I, I think it's going to be critical that we, whatever folder you guys have these calendars, and make sure that we got view access for all of the, all the board members for that, so that you guys can keep up with these changes. Because it's going to say revision such and such date, and you can see the latest ones as these things, because they're going to change, there's no doubt about it.
Just a question too. If, if we're, if we're able to see like the calendar, it's the committee, right, calendar committee access to that, Calendar committee access to that, do, do we have site team access to their meeting notes too?
Yes, you should, we might have to ask Ryan for him, and you can look at all site meeting minutes.
The whole district, everybody that's gonna, is, is it set for everybody to have view access, the whole district, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Perfect. I think I maybe looked in there, but I didn't know, I didn't see any, maybe from twenty-one, maybe that's just.
I believe.
Go under the six to twelve revision folder, or the, yeah.
Okay.
And the elementary ones are under the, the five, but then the, the combined F L C, that's what it put forward to.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, six point three, learning model transition plan report, I'm assuming.
There's gonna be a team member.
Do we have a handout for that, or is it just?
No, because it's, it's really a discussion point right now. Based on what the governor came out with the executive order, and, you know, we've talked about brainstorming-wise. Initially, we looked at, okay, March twenty-second was gonna be the first time that we could even get this stuff going. That was, that was a target date, date before. But with the changes, um, that they came out with, um, and in my report, you know, there's some pieces inside, you know, these will cross over. If you, if you look at my superintendent report, uh, so that I don't double this one up, in that safe learning plan, it's the third bullet down. Those are some of those major changes that took place, uh, with the seventeenth, uh, executive order. We know that if, you know, we're trying to figure out what's the earliest date. We know you're getting a lot of comments from parents, you know, to push five days a week. E L can do it, Morehead can do it, why can't D G F do it, you know? Those conversations are going on in community, we know that. Uh, so, uh, believe me, I, I, I've heard it loud and clear also. Uh, so you, one of the reasons that we, it would be extremely difficult to do anything before the eighth in the first place, um, is we've got a lot of vaccinations going on right now. Okay? Um, there's fifty per day that are going on. I know these guys, you know, there's, there's been such detailed work that's going on to find out where are we gonna have potential issues. Uh, we know, we've already identified that this Thursday, we've got a lot of staff, teaching staff, that are going to be vaccinated. Um, so it's not the issue for Thursday, they got that figured out. Who's serving for what, who's, who, how are we managing that time they're gonna be gone? The problem is Friday. How many are gonna be sick? Because, um, we know just from our shirts, our small sample that we've already had. Uh, and I can speak to this, because I was pretty much in capacity the last Wednesday when I got the shot on Tuesday. Um, you know, we've had a number of people that have, so if all of a sudden we got fifty, and maybe you're gonna have ten staff members at a site that are actually gonna get that shot, what if you lose three or four? You know, we're trying to make up the plans that what if all of a sudden, ten o'clock news on Thursday night, we gotta tell everybody we're going distance tomorrow, because we've already got that many people reporting in that they're sick and will not be working on Friday. Those, it's gonna be just like a storm. We're gonna need a storm day type of destruction. I, it, it's crazy in, in these times of COVID, but that's, that is high anxiety by this group that is trying to get this stuff all set up. High anxiety. So we know that we will have about ninety percent of our essential staff members that are working directly with kids done the week before the eighth. So we're trying to figure out, okay, knowing that, knowing that Friday the fifth is already a day off because of parent-teacher conferences that week. So you've already got Friday off. Part of the transition plan that we're looking at is using Thursday. And of course, we don't have students on Wednesday, they're virtual already. So using those two days as transition days to get this plan moving forward, that's why we're having the site leadership team meetings this week, trying to lay out, let's go with the, let's get the target date of March eighth to get the kids back five days a week. And so we've been spending quite a bit of time, um, trying to figure out what are all the details we're missing? And bring it back to your site leadership teams, have the discussions back at sites, what do we miss? Now, are there gonna be some concerns and some, some things, you've heard them already earlier? What about that extra prep time? There's nothing in the, there's nothing in the executive order. When you go to direct, that whole thirty-minute thing was all about when you're in distance or hybrid. Not direct. So that's what that was meant for, was the extra time. Are you going to have in your classroom, uh, some kids on camera and some kids, it's like going back to the ITV days? You're not changing your instruction for them, it's the same instruction, they're expected to be there at time and all that. But is it gonna create some anxiety for people that we had this extra time on Wednesday? Sure it is. And those things have to be discussed at, at the meetings. But again, there is no violation of master agreement, there isn't anything about executive order, uh, and if we, we can do, let's say, also we wanna do the busing out of the kids at noon on Wednesdays, so there can be this planning time, it can be done, but remember when we're in direct, we gotta count direct student time. Which means if we start out with a calendar that was right at the bare minimums of having enough student contact time, guess what, we won't have it. And those days after graduation that we had for workshops, for planning, those become student contact days if we wanted to make that work. Because somehow you gotta get more time direct with the kids. So there's issues to, to try to work through, if, if people seriously say we've gotta have this extra time, we can put professional development in on these Wednesday afternoons. It's gonna make it difficult for parents again if, if all of a sudden we're doing the busing at one o'clock. So you got all those issues with parents. You know, so this is, you know, there, this may be one of those things that people are not gonna be thrilled about internally, staff-wise, but how do we get the, if we go with the belief that getting the kids back five days a week is critical? Those are some of the things we gotta, we gotta think about. Um, again, this isn't a board vote thing, unless you rescind a, what you've already done as a board. Because MSBA put that out back in September for you to pass that particular resolution so that we can do our job and get this planning moving forward and have the long meetings that we're having. I think they'll be happy to not see me next year because we have a lot of meetings, needless to say. And, um, they even put together a deal for me, you know, this will just take a little bit. And that's my famous words, when we schedule one-hour meetings administratively, they've been going three hours.
Four.
And then that, that's a break.
Yeah. And no break. And, you know, so, but it's because I can honestly say in my, in my career, I have never seen an admin cabinet get to that level of detail in the plan. I feel, I feel so good about how this group has responded to getting to that detail level. Um, it, it's, it's, it's outstanding. Um, so I think they've got a lot of the details and, and the issues, uh, identified that they can bring back to their site leadership teams and their staff meetings. Now they get the take over talking about the issues that they've come to see that are gonna be problematic.
We're all just talking about the process a little bit, so we are kind of attacking this, like we, um, attacked reopening, or opening up COVID-style this fall. Um, we had a, and I put a piece up today because of the, uh, I didn't wanna take over the screen, but we have a, and basically an Excel sheet that has, um, that's been shared out with leadership team members that talks about different concerns, and they have added access and they can make their own tasks, but this is it right now. So when you say opening up any earlier than the eighth, I'm gonna run past the other way and make the use, because it's hard, there's a lot of hard work that has to go in place. You know, some of the topics are scheduled, practice and lunch, sounds simple, right? Well, if Joe and I, Jerry, uh, go over site, have to keep our kids about three feet apart if we're in person, that's a recommended, right? We're already eating lunch at ten, kind of getting done at five o'clock. I'm now gonna have about twenty, twenty-two kids in a classroom, and we're gonna be eating, or the other option is we put three hundred kids down and not lunch them together. So we have to figure this out. How are we gonna staff that? Also in the guidelines, it says try to keep your cohorts together. And we're supposed to also have a scene seating, assigned seating at the middle school and high school. Have you ever tried to do a site seating at a middle school and high school lunchtime? And we've got a lot of details to work on. It's everything from scheduling to COVID-related questions, cleaning, um, how do we reorient our kids? One of my favorite things in here, and they've started to put things on here, and they all have access to this, how are we gonna make the mental healthings of our students and staff when they get back in the building? Hey, they, they're, they're going to be stressed, they're going, they're not used to it, they're not used to having four hundred kids in a building that's, uh, middle school is already too small. How are we gonna address those needs? Because they can even know how to not have reservation at the level that they need to. Middle school is whole conflict, that's what we've got, that's part of the skill that they gain. Part of the problems they bring, but also part of the skills that we help to teach them now. So there's just so much to do. I, um, what we'll do is, this was sent out to the leadership team, we will meet on Wednesday, they will meet with their grade levels. Uh, at a staff meeting on, uh, Wednesday, I can't remember what time I have, but maybe two-thirty or three o'clock, we'll share this, just like we did this fall, and say, hey, so if you have anything you want your leadership team to put on or put it under. And then our job, all effectively as a staff, is to figure out what's gonna be working. But it's different than just opening up school, because there's still things we have to figure out, there's still guidelines that we have to follow. And all of the, um, sites are going to kind of follow, did I think we sent this out today? Marco, I just like, I have this coming out now, coming out tonight. And so everybody will have access to ask their questions, but also, most importantly, what are some of the solutions that we can work on together to make this work? So that's, um, what the big part of how this is, uh, we have all sorts of questions, we don't have all the answers, but guess what, if we divide and conquer with the leadership teams and with the other staff members, we should probably figure this out. You know, um, lunch is a big issue before and after school, kids come in at them, or the pride right now, they go upstairs to their, um, classrooms. Well, that is taking time away from teachers to collaborate a little bit, do some of those things, we still have to do that. Probably, because we have to maintain a three feet of courage, if you've seen our little school lobby in the morning, it's, we're out with three feet of courage if we do that. So lots of details to figure out. I know middle school, now elementary's have some of the, most of the high school have a living to their young, then, then in person, um, all of us, but, and then another big thing we're wondering about is how many kids are going to choose, and their parents are gonna be choosing, uh, distance learning? And if they do, does that mean, um, what our old numbers look like? Um, and we at the middle school wanna keep our cohorts together, uh, for lots of different reasons, but also for contract tracing and for the realization from the state. So what if we have unbalanced cohorts, how are we gonna help the rest? So who's scheduling things, um, um, who tells, lots of themselves to figure out, lots of hard work. So, um, you guys wanna add anything for that? No, I thought that was pretty clear. Okay. Wait.
Well, probably, probably the biggest thing, well, you hit the one on the lunch, but, uh, it'll be interesting coming up with a lunch hour schedule, I guess, as far as dismissing kids and making sure they don't fit in there, and then having assigned seats by different age levels and that kind of thing. So that'll be a, a bit of a challenge, but probably the bigger challenge is just pulling back to what we did last August and looking by period, how many kids are in each classroom?
Yep.
And how to move them around, but based on the home of the clients, I might have to shuffle some. Probably my biggest fear is having to adjust kids' schedules to fit classes. I don't know how to better describe that to you. I might have thirty-seven kids enrolled, well, enrolled in a class because we got a blue and silver, but now I'm gonna have to put them in a period, which may adjust schedules for kids.
We have something very important.
I just had a question about, um, we had talked earlier about bringing kids back, I think it was a couple weeks ago, or a week ago, um, kind of surveying the kids with the parents and determining, you know, which ones kind of planned on coming back? Have we thought about doing that in the middle school and high school, or middle school and elementary?
We've got, you and I surveyed, that was ready to go.
Okay.
Yep, it, we have to know that.
Because I assume that that would help us in preparation.
Should have been.
It's going on tomorrow, right?
Yep.
So.
Tomorrow?
I assume you had it, I just, that, I know something that somebody asked me and.
Yep.
And I can tell you, back when we did it for the high school in December, there were about fifty of the over four hundred kids that were opting for distance at that time. I would assume it would be welcome soon.
And we might have parents that when they think of, oh, seven, twenty kids in a classroom, they don't feel safe that they're gonna pull their kids, and that's, that's why they have the right to do that. So we need to get a handle on that.
Sure.
And I'm saying it's whole with the communication piece of it. We, um, you know, and we try to foresee what we're doing to kind of prepare ourselves so that in the event the board does, uh, choose to go with March eighth, we would include that communication and that survey all in one communication that could go up tonight or tomorrow, whatever it's best.
Yeah, basically, when we put out the information about, you know, because tonight is important and find out what questions you guys have about. In the end, you know, sometime either tonight or tomorrow, we're gonna put out the information of parents that we're targeting March eighth to bring the kids back, five days a week. But we have to also sit down, they have to sit down with the, with the elementary staff, the middle school, the high school staff, what are the problems? Can we work the problems out by that point and find out all that information this week with those meetings? It may end up being that we find out we can't get all of this stuff done until March fifteenth. You know, but we gotta have a target date to get this stuff moving forward. And at least then we can be communicating, here's why, here's the issues, you know, on people. Because typically, people just say, how can Morehead do it and you guys can't? How can, you know, that's what you guys, and, and that's legitimate. And that's why we've gotta have all these details about what is unique to our situation. Each district has different issues with this that gets created, based on the makeup, based on the capacity of buildings. I can tell you, school districts that are declining enrollment, they don't have these issues. Because you got plenty of space in the rooms, probably have empty classrooms.
I think we as a board can appreciate all the, um, hard work done by administration and staff, and I have to, like Ronnie said, you guys will work the problem and, you know, I just think communicating with parents and, and, uh, you know, I wish we could just wave a wand and COVID is gone. I can tell you, in my world of respiratory therapy and healthcare, it's, it's scary, it's anxiety, I get, I get it all. I, I a hundred percent do. But we all know the best place for these kids is in, in the building. And these middle school and high school kids are struggling, as we know, with the amount of kids that have Fs in ninth and tenth grade, and I'm so grateful that our elementary schools have been in the four days a week, and I applaud the efforts to keep them here. So you guys will work the problem and communicate with us how it's going and, you know, it's been fun and all exhausting, so you guys are doing all this work. And all the staff, the teachers, and I get it, I mean, it's, it's exhausting, I mean, I work, they snap their fingers, and it's like the next stage, this is the initiative and you're doing it.
I think that's the other thing is.
It's hard.
Yeah, two fingers, is one, this isn't as simple as just, oh, just let all the kids back in. If that's the message that you're trying to make clear, that there is a lot of pieces, there's a lot of guidelines and things that we haven't had before that we come in, and they, they change almost every day.
Yeah, oh, I know, I see.
I see those, those emails coming in, you kind of get anxious, like what is different today and how do we have this to do? And then, you know, the, the other thing is that really, you know, we have to work together, and there's different strengths that we all have, and, I mean, those are the family jobs this year with the, uh, with the ACTs. And I think, um, the nursing and there's, people will pull together, but we gotta get organized and get these things done. March eighth might be pushing it, I don't know, we'll, we'll see once we kind of dig into it a little bit more, we identify all the issues.
There's decisions that are gonna be made this week regardless of our starting date back to this. Such as, we're, you know, we're gonna get feedback from staff as far as, okay, there may be wants, you know, like the extra thirty minutes and all that, but then there's gonna be a reality that that may or may not happen, and that decision's gonna be made this week, and then put it out to everyone. And then it's gonna be accepted and let's move on. Let's work the next piece of the problem, because somebody's gotta make those decisions. And that's our job administratively, management, to make that final decision.
And you said that will be decided by the end of this week?
Because by the end of this week, we'll have had a chance to have everyone, the site leadership teams, meet so they can bring those concerns, we know the concerns, but the bottom line is, some of these things have to just happen. And again, not asking people to like, we understand it. Some are more empathetic and can put it into words better than I do, because I'm like, this has to happen. And, you know, these guys are much better about saying, oh, we get, give a hug and a virtual hug and all that. I'm like, we're gonna do this.
Well, I think it's time that it'll be decided this week, so then the teachers, when they meet with parents at conferences.
Exactly.
It solidifies it.
Exactly. So, you know, it's, it's, if people wanna do the five, if, if people wanna do the Wednesday afternoon thing, that means, okay, guess what, calendar has to change, because we gotta get the student contact time in. And if that's gonna come from recommendations from everybody, we're gonna look at that. But again, it's, you're gonna, there's gonna be give and take. And in the end, by the end of this week, um, we gotta know, how are we gonna make sure we get student contact time in for those kids? I have concerns about, you know, I, I wanna see them five days a week. Right now, we're still in there, having to do the testing. I would think everybody would wanna get those kids back five days a week. I know they, I know our staff want to get the kids back. And I know they wanna test prep them and all that, and, and there's anxiety about how we're gonna have that accountability handled. You know, that puts a lot of pressure on people, but in the end, we've gotta just work the problem. Break it down, work the problem, and move on.
So I know we've talked about time and planning, and it's important, and five versus a four. Does your staff feel like they can do it with five days? Or do they really find it crucial to have the day to plan? Because even if you have virtual learners, and the truth of matter is, if one of your kids is virtual learning and they're just saying, you're going to listen to so-and-so speak the entire time and have nothing on your screen, that's not what's best for kids either. Like, you can say you can join a Google Meet like this and just listen. But if you have a hands-on activity in front of you or a handmade worksheet via Google Doc, whatever that is, and they don't have that in front of them, it's not the same. So no matter what, teachers are still going to be putting that stuff online. Some teachers in the high school and middle school who teach multiple different classes, like a high school teacher could have up to four different classes a day. It's not just putting, it's not just scanning this online and putting it on so the Lord can see it. It's making it interactive. It's making it hands-on. It's learning, it's teaching, it's not just following the law. So my, I, of course, being a teacher, I want kids every day too. But if we're looking at what's best for all kids, we have to think of those distance learners too. And in high school, there's twenty percent of kids distance learning right now. That's a lot of time and a lot of effort of those teachers to put all those classes online. So I guess my original question was, do you think, does your staff, like, find it necessary? Do you feel like we're cutting people short here with not giving them time?
The, or the Wednesdays, you mean?
Yeah.
Really, I just don't see any way around it if we're doing in-person, if we're doing hybrid, or we can have the Wednesdays, but I can't have all the kids in the building. And so I, I see what you're saying. And I think they would say that they, that the collaboration time and the prep time has been important and it's, and it's good. Um, I, I think that, but I just don't see, unless, you know, something different comes out with the weight scans right now, we would be in a hybrid model. And then that means that we can only bring the captive kids back in the building for the six feet apart. And so that's the piece that is particular for me, and I don't know around that. If there is something I would love to learn, we could talk about it, but at this point, I don't know it. The only thing, I think that even with the four days a week in person, like, rise with the, what his point is, then you have to add days on at the end, people are tired. It kind of matters if you want to do that.
Agreed.
But if we could ask them, we'll probably ask them.
So our Wednesdays don't count right now?
They do because we're in hybrid. And if, why don't you go into direct? Pardon?
Wednesdays still count if we stay with the four-day model?
Uh-uh.
Or did that change when they do?
Because automatically, you can't go four days if you're going to be direct. Unless you're going to come to self-development on the Wednesdays.
So we wouldn't have enough contract days because we're already the very middle of the month because we were anticipating the construction project, which has not pushed back. But now you have, you know, graduation date set and like, you know.
So that's why you're talking about the half day, like, early out, like, start kind of thing? So that you can give collaboration without giving the whole day? I assume that's kind of where that's, that are kind of like an even take.
This is the stuff that's so frustrating. Every time an executive order comes out and you don't have the ones who have to put the plans together at the table.
Right.
Uh, I know that you guys have heard it through MSBA. Kirk has said it so many times, Dan, who's the head of MASA, because we're not brought to the table to be able to say this. Now, we know there's other groups that are at the table, but we're not at that table. And so it's extremely frustrating. They come up with an executive order, they make these changes, and it's like, well, that helps on this, but it hurts, you know?
Well, I think that's important to acknowledge. If we can't, if we just really can't do it because the in-person versus the hybrid, the terminology or whatever it is, I think that's important to communicate too. And everyone who's watching will hear it now. But I think when staff have those concerns too, I mean, I don't know that they've got that, those direct answers, which is why I was bringing it up. But I like that. Thank you for answering, and I appreciate that perspective and it's very obviously helpful to hear.
I can have the news, but they understand very clearly what we have behind there. Because I give them so much credit. We have worked so hard until every instant we can to get kids that, the hybrid kids and four days a week that we can. More capacity, we have a state. Again, then you have somebody who's sick or whatever, but most states are on capacity. And they would luckily put out their man. I also claim the Wednesday stuff is fabulous. Absolutely has done, and they work their tails off on the high-risk kids and all that. I, I'm not, I don't think any of us are against that. We just don't know how to break it or bring all our kids back. Does that make sense?
No, that absolutely makes sense.
And I can speak, like, from the elementary perspective a little bit. We've heard it over and over, you know, with the Wednesdays, this is amazing collaboration time it is. But I'm hesitant to swear to myself, the goal with Heidi is we, if we get, we have the kids back five days a week, it's going to, we can't do the Wednesdays. But we also talked a little bit about today, that if we go back in five days a week, before school and after school times, our teachers will have those times back. Because right now, they're good kids from the minute they get to school to the minute they leave. So they'll have a little bit more of that collaboration time to do some of that field.
We've been asking as superintendents, remember, I said this back in January, when I said, we've spent all that time through December reporting that the elementary is in direct. Which means we should have been five days a week. So we all received this letter as superintendents, you know what you're doing. Cut it out, or we're not going to count your time on Wednesdays. Okay, so that went out to us in January. Now, we've been pushing back on it that, you know what? This is stupid. Let us do this. I mean, I would love to be able to tell the staff, hey, executive order, novel idea. Why don't you address the fact that let us do the Wednesdays as we've been doing and give us full credit for being a student contact day in direct? Right now, it's not there. So we better plan for, because we, I can tell you for a fact, we cannot afford to all of a sudden not be getting full FTEs on the students, the weighted average failing membership, to generate that income coming in to be able to pay for the expenditures. That will not go well through a district financial.
Have they given you any deadline when you can't keep counting the Wednesdays for the elementary?
I think he just said it out loud, but he's ignoring, all the superintendents are ignoring it, right?
The problem is, as we, they, they haven't made a big issue because it's been the elementaries. And they want, you know, politically, they want to get those kids back. But we've already been chastised that as you add the other ones back to direct, do not expect to do that district-wide K through twelve if you want funding. So we're trying our darndest as administrative, as superintendents, to try to put pressure. That's why we had the meeting and we were fortunate in our Lakes Country region last Friday to be able to get the executive director from MSBA and the executive director from MASA at that meeting. And we were, we were shouting out the same concerns on behalf of our districts, that this is creating havoc. Everybody's under so much stress right now already. And every time you do this, and don't give us forewarning, makes it that much more difficult for all of our school districts. So we'll see. I, I yell a lot when I get those meetings. I'm sure you know that.
Do you think that going forward, is we can have this option after?
Yes.
Presumably COVID's done with the design and President. In the fall, do you foresee them saying you have to have a video option for kids that don't want?
I'm sure they have COVID. We don't.
I mean, for me, that's, you know, I, I understand why we have to have it. But that's what's really troubling me for a lot of teachers is that.
It causes more problems.
You're, you're trying to do two things.
You know.
It's extremely stressful. And they've been two campaigns about it. They, they get innovative and wonderful about it, but it's extremely stressful.
I do believe honestly that this is, this is going to be a topic that at Minnesota and the School Board Association, MREA, everybody's in full agreement. Get rid of that because if we're not going to get that prepped and all that, and you're making us do, this is not working well for us. So I think that's going to change. It's just when? And unfortunately, parents and families don't want to wait. You know, every time I bring this stuff up on phone calls, it's like, you're telling me why you can't, but just get them back. Yeah, I understand your concerns.
And I think it's also important to acknowledge, which all the work, like you said, Heidi, it's, it's a lot of work for teachers. High school and middle school teachers do all the virtual teaching themselves, like, during class. And I know we have designated virtual teachers in the elementary. Will those teachers stay virtual or just depending on numbers?
We, yeah, we talked about that today. Again, we'll look at that information we get from that survey that we have. And if we need to monitor and adjust and maybe move somebody around, depending on when we get back.
Gotcha. But we're planning.
Yeah, so we're planning. We already talked about that.
Because it could end up being that all of a sudden, somebody comes back into the classroom teaching.
Yeah.
So then what does that do? All of a sudden now, you're going to have some parents who are going to say, they got a new homeroom teacher.
Yeah, I know, I thought about that too. Let's just get to me, all.
You know, so, believe me, there's been a lot of.
Yeah. I think it's good for the community to hear this conversation though. Because if you don't, if you're not living it every day, you don't know anything. That's like all the work you guys do. And it's not just thinking, like, I got all the numbers, I printed them out, I was looking at them. Just because there's, what, nine kindergarten distance learning between both sites? That's nine kids that you just can't throw back into a classroom without making an adjustment.
How many are in middle school right now? What do you have for middle school?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, okay, so.
So ten percent.
So out of forty-eight, they know that they have to let me know if they're to breathe. Not knowing any of the, if the chemists to breathe, they have to let me know like a week before if they want to come in. That's what you've been hearing pretty routinely. Um, I've had a lot of it happening so far. So, who knows? I don't know, the survey goes out, I don't know.
Right. And that's just another thing, I think, for you guys, props to you because it's, like you said, always changing. But that's the side that parents don't know either. So I'm just putting it out there that it's a lot of work every day. So thank you.
I think a big shout out to DGF community in general is the fact, if you look at my superintendent report, the enrollment piece, they came out with, you know, based on the governors looking at putting some more money for applying enrollment for the amount of school districts that have lost enrollment to homeschooling. Well, DGF's going to get no extra aid on that deal. Why? Because we have not lost, if you look at September and then look at February, two students less. They're working within our system. They're not deciding to go homeschool. I know Morehead's lost a hundred and some students. So I think it's, it's a shout out to the planning that everybody's done and the fact that, you know, families are working with us and they're putting, you know, it's like, okay, well, then accept this. It's not the best, but they've been really good about as a community, so.
Do we have anything more to add to the learning model transition? We'll move on to the superintendent report. Any more questions? I think this is going to be a work in progress. And if we maybe just, you know, communicate with your staff, communicate with us at the board, which you guys are kind of working on this week, that'd be helpful for us. And we're getting these questions. And material pro, your Thursday communication is always to the community, which I've been getting lots of comments that it really likes that they know on Thursdays that they're going to be, they're going to be receiving a communication from the leadership. So that's been helpful.
We are definitely planning that, so.
Okay, so let's move on to the superintendent.
So first one, we've got our transition starting. We've got our new person as an RN that's coming in. So Megan Long will be at the Dilworth site tomorrow, meeting with Kayla and I. So we can talk about, okay, here's how we're going to have this set up. Here's, you know, getting her up to speed as far as the process. Here's what we got from staffing wise and what else, health department. Megan in the, for the rest of the year, will be going over to the London site. So we have an RN at both sites. And then what will happen is Joe and whomever else has all the stuff in the boardroom, you got a few days to get all the crap up because that becomes a bulk room. So I don't know where we're putting all the stuff, but we, you know, the boardroom we're taking back, it's now going to be a bulk. So I talked to Jamie about it last week and said, get the stuff out of there because.
Did you, did you guys order the new vets and everything with the COVID money? And the exam beds and stuff?
I don't know if it's, if Kayla was going, Kayla's been working on this vaccination thing, so.
So that, and that's okay. I just was curious.
I don't think it's there yet. And to be honest, let's face it, the first few weeks is going to be getting up to speed and helping out with everything else.
Just our new board members, we had talked about, you know, have this COVID money. And because we need to basically increase our space for the health of the nurse, we were talking about purchasing like exam beds and the stuff that's going to be needed for the new wing now because we can use the COVID dollars.
Save a little bit on construction.
Yeah, take that early construction. So that's what I was asking.
So you can, you can see the enrollment stuff, Safe Learning Plan. Couple of those pieces that are critical with the middle school and high school in, in mind.
Good. Take, take a moment, pull it in.
Somehow we get. Sorry about this.
Oh, you're playing.
Okay, so one of the issues, again, middle school and high school compared to the elementary. Elementary can, can have them, there isn't that where it has to be three foot distance. If you're looking at Safe Learning Plan, you can have less than three foot distance at the elementary level in the classrooms. They want you to maintain more, but again, it's suggested. There's a difference in it. At the middle school and high school, you don't have that. If you look at that one bullet point, middle school, high school must continue to maintain at least three foot distance unless county data range is zero to ten cases per ten thousand people. We have great data right now at the county level, but we're still at fourteen point three three. And there's no way they can plan this stuff for, hey, we're just going to assume it's going to be under ten. What if all of a sudden one week it pops up to over ten? So you can't put a plan together assuming you can go less than three feet. They got to go with the plan that they're going to maintain three feet because middle school and high school must maintain a minimum of three, unless it drops below ten. So they better put a line together with, with the three foot minimum. So I wanted you to make sure that you, you understood that. The video presentation for anybody who wants to view that one that took place last Friday, Thursday or Friday, this is the YouTube link, HTTPS. So you can go to that, forty-some minutes. It had both the Assistant Commissioner, Heather Mueller, for MBE updates. And then it also had some, one of the lead people from MDH. So that's why I wanted you to have that link. Uh, one of my favorite things that has been on my radar the last couple of weeks is that the local road improvement program, which those of you remember from two thousand eighteen, and we were all hoping to get Seventh down to the county road. And, and both the city of London, county, and school district were all trying to get that through. We didn't get the funding back in eighteen for that. There's a brand-new amount of batch money for it. The governor signed it on back in October. They put out everything here in January. It's due March third, I believe, the application. The school district cannot be the one initiating. It must be either the city or the county. The county has a different project. The city of London has a different project. And the city of Dilworth also has a project. And they all want me to sign something about, hey, we support blah, blah, blah. So I've had conversations with the key people at each and just said, look, we have this little project that in two thousand eighteen, it was a top one. And it now isn't, but it still is to us. And we purchased the land and we want to, we don't want to change the balance of where we have facility, the, the sports and all that kind of stuff. Um, so I had a conversation today with Clay Cowan. And we're going to have a meeting yet this week to see if all of a sudden we can elevate that project to a higher level. Um, it's a unique situation because city limits and Seventh Street, you know, from Park going east, it's county. Park going west, it's city of London. But the extension. But the extension, who's it is it going to be? And so who's going to initiate it? I'm trying to get the county to initiate it. And then even if they initiate it, there's got to be agreements between the city and the county, who's going to maintain it? So you can just, you can just see the politics and this all has to be put together by March 3rd.
So who are we needing, you know, county commissioners?
Man, I, county commissioners, county commissioners that this is, you know, I'm approaching it from a safety standpoint.
It's another access point.
This is, right now, the only way the kid's getting out, if there's a train, is going through neighborhoods, residential. Get, you know, get the kids' traffic off of Park. Let them go directly from the school. We got the entrance that's going to be on the west side. That road needs to get down. So, um, I'll do everything I can with, with, uh, the players at the county level that are going to submit it. But, um, any people that you know that are county commissioners and what else not to have them kind of push for this to happen would be critical. And it's a short time off for that. So that's, I want to talk about that tonight for sure.
March what?
March 3rd. And they, they're all aware. The application itself isn't that difficult. Um, it's not that long. But, uh, they've all put together applications for other projects. So, and, and that is.
Our new board members please purchase this land to the west here, so we own up to the Cooley. So back in 18, the discussion was to extend Seventh Street all the way out to County Road 17. So then, since this will be the west side of the building, it's get access. We, we're trying to reduce the, we would like to reduce like Brian said, the traffic on Park Avenue with kids.
Right. And, and through this grant, we could get the road built. And then the discussions I've had at joint powers with some of the county commissioners is then county put it on your list to get the road paved. Whether it takes two or three more years, but at least we've got the exit. And then you and city of London work out the details, who's going to maintain it? Again, I won't be here, but get the road built. Cause that's critical piece. So, um, last one, budget. Again, I was saying, we don't have the money, we don't know on the revenue as far as how much is coming into the different things. Um, I actually, tonight, now that some of these other things are done, this is my task for the next couple of days is to go through the budget. And then I'm doing, uh, some virtual meetings with Cindy and I'm trying to update and get that revised. My hope is for the March 8th meeting, but how things have been going lately, I wouldn't be shocked if I don't get it to you until the 22nd. If that be the case, we'll have a fiscal personnel meeting that we'll definitely have in that week before, so we can sit down and talk about it. How's that one?
Sounds good.
Career Academy update, um, all I was going to say, and Wayne can, I know that Wayne and Katie meet every Monday with Josh. That's the things that are going on. Uh, so we've got Morehead DGF that are trying to work through. There are so many issues and you've heard some of them already tonight, you know, whether it be the belt, you know, that, on the one hand, the financial part to me comes through the board committee with the superintendent. And then programming.
How many dates when you guys are going to start having openings for Laura and David?
Uh, not, not yet. Um, we've all been trying to figure out this learning plan to change and, and all that. Um, so they meet every Monday and then, uh, Katie, Wayne and I meet every Tuesday so that we can go over, I can hear the updates from that and then I can be going over stuff with Brandon. Um, so just if people are wondering, are there meetings going on? Absolutely, there's meetings going on. Construction update. I put a call in. I have not heard of, on a permits, that's all I'm going to say.
No more needed on that one. Can't talk about anything, so we get the main permits, so. All right, any questions for Brian? Or we will move forward here?
Folks, the afternoon won't take long.
Okay, so 7.1, this is comparable of our regular meeting on February 8th. Do we have an option? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any discussion? Are you in no discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, 8.1, we have our plans and accounts. Laura, what are our bills? Uh, $331,722.59. Range, we also have a new packet, we have the treasury report and fund total report. We have the Minnesota liquid asset and max account, we have the activity accounts report. Uh, do we have a motion go through? So, motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any questions or discussions? Hearing of questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to new and unfinished business. 9.1, this is our 2020, 2021 American Indian Plan compliance. This is something that we do every year. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, um, Wayne had sent this out. Uh, do you have anything you would like to discuss on this?
No, just, just that it's a manual thing. Uh, we meet, I have a committee of members, American Indian members and students, parents, and they meet with me just to see if our plan is going as we met the plan last fall and they're agreeing with that.
Any questions, Wayne?
I had a question, looking on like the group four money thing there. Instead of it was like 10,000 of one and then 13,000, the other for 23,000. Again, it's only like 13,000 included in the total. I saw that. I, I, I did see what you're talking about. It's actually supposed to be, uh, 10 and 3, I think it is, 10,000 and 3.
That's what I was wondering, yeah, one of the ones was listed.
Is that something that you would correct?
I, I edited it already.
You edited it already? Okay. Any other questions, Wayne? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.2, we have, um, this is our early retirement offers and agreements. Um, we, Amy's got them here. Can you hand them to me and I'll announce them? Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. So we are offering early retirement incentive compensation, uh, offers and agreements for, um, Jerelyn Sleepguard, um, Mary Daly, Corey Olsted and Kathy Martin. So, um, just want to give them all a shout out. Thank you for your service to our district and a commitment to our students. Um, you guys will be missed.
And the only thing I want, I want to add on, the one for Kathy Martin, is that she had a request to be able to continue coaching speech. I'm like, you go for it. If you, if you want to do that, more power to.
I think I read for one more year.
Yep, she said it's right here. I would ask, could I be allowed to continue as I've had the speech coach for one more year? I think, uh, she does a fantastic job for us and she would like to do that. I have a certain one company to shoot that, so. All right, so these are presented as per the criteria established by Minnesota statute 1228.48. Ronnie, did you have something you wanted to add? All right, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, 9.3, school board recognition, recognition week, um, is 22nd through the 26th here. Do we have a motion? I feel like we shouldn't be voting on that. Is there a second? Do we have a second? Here, David's going second.
If you're doing a four, three vote, you have it all.
All right.
It's also shouldn't be recognized, it's a new.
The Minnesota, uh, School Board Association has set February 22nd to the 26th as Minnesota School Board Recognition Week to build awareness and understanding of the vital function elected school board members play in our society. DGF schools is joining other public school districts from across the state to celebrate School Board Recognition Week to honor local school board members for their commitment to DGF and its students. Even though we're making a special effort to show our appreciation this week, your work is a year-round commitment and we thank each of you for your time and dedication to DGF. So thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. All right, well now we got to vote on it, so. We got to vote here.
What happens if we turn it down?
We take it back.
Well, I will say when you, um, I didn't realize how much of a commitment this was until I first got elected and, uh, it's a rewarding and challenging job and I'm grateful to do it for my community, so. Even, even the times in that games and sometimes I want to be, I just want to be mom tonight. But, you know, I just appreciate you all. We're very lucky, um, to have each other and we have great staff and the great teachers and administration, so. Anyway, I suppose we should vote on this. All those in favor say aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. It just seems wrong to vote on it. All right, 9.4, policy 522. Um, this is policy, uh, in regards to Title IX, sex nondiscrimination policy. This is the grievance procedure and process. This is sent out via email. Is everybody able to read through it and do you have any questions?
Just my understanding is just that we're adding, um, Heidi as a person, so we have an administrator on the team.
Yeah, in case staff, something happened, then staff would be in half.
I just want to make sure that we announce that.
Yep, yep.
And, and as I said, I fully expect that we may get a couple more updates. Um, and if we do, if and when we do, we'll call a policy committee meeting and we'll do a virtual whatever and just go with those for the second.
Okay, sounds good. So do we have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brandy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, 10.0, board comments, future agenda items. We're, um, right now the plan is to have an operations committee meeting on Monday, March 8th at 5. Uh, those on the operation committee, Amy, Laura and Nicole, uh, look for an email from Brian in regards to that. And then our next board meeting will follow that at eight, uh, on the 8th at 6:00 PM. Anything else we need to discuss or put out in the universe?
I would, I would say assume that if we get the board, so we get a work session set up, the full board, who else not? There's no company in the operations meeting because we'll cover all that's at that point. You guys comfortable with that?
Okay, so we're going to take that off Monday, March 18th.
One more, really.
We'll leave it on there.
Leave it on there.
Cause we've been waiting for those.
Okay. All right, so at 7:33, this meeting is called adjourned. I can't even tell if you guys.
It's been a long day.